All right. Good evening and welcome to the February 6, 2024, meeting of the Hickory City Council. At this time, I would like to ask the Reverend Bill Gerard, retired clergy, to the podium for our invocation. I would ask that if you're able to please stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Gerard, we appreciate you being here with us and praying this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Dear Lord of all of us, we who gather here to do the business of our city, give thanks to you for our city and all the people here who seek to live in harmony and prosperity by your grace. We thank you for the vision of so many who in our past and even now come together to bring opportunity and order to the citizens so that the citizens can fulfill their full potential as persons made in your image. We acknowledge that at times we have not done your will as we have created barriers for some so they could not share in your goals of giving all people fair consideration and opportunity. We pray for your wisdom and our deliberations and decisions tonight, that we would not forget the marginalized and the disadvantaged, that they have a special place in your heart. We give thanks for the resources you've given us to make our city a better place for all our citizens, for funds to buy new police cars and build an arts walk so we have a community that is not only safe but also where our souls are lifted up and stirred by creative minds. Thank you for giving us freedom, a democracy where differences, debate, and decision are made within the context of order and fairness. So in this hour, grant each of us a sense of hopefulness and solidarity as we move toward a brighter future so that all may thrive in our city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our all.
It's good to see everyone here this evening. We've got a lot to present, but I want to start off with some very special presentations and recognize some very special people that are here with us this evening. As you can see, all these young ladies that are lined up on the back wall there, they'll be our first recipients of this very special presentation. So at this time, I would like to recognize and invite to come forward the Lenorion Women's National Championship Triathlon Team and their coaches. Y'all can come on up. Anybody in here think you can outrun them? Kim, you coming up with it? Come on up, Kim. Kim Paye, come on up. Athletic director.
It's about the athletes.
I know it is, but it's about...
I can't outrun them either.
I know, but you can stay here with me. How about that? You can help me pronounce some of these names, perhaps. I'm not sure. Ladies, I want to apologize in advance if I really goof up some of your names. I've tried real hard not to do that, but it's possible. And if I do it, it's certainly not intentional. All right? As I've already said, this is the national championship team, and we're extremely proud of their accomplishments. And to recognize them, I want to read a proclamation. So it says, "Proclamation: Recognition of Lenorion Women's Triathlon. Whereas on November the 11th, 2023, in Tempe, Arizona, Lenorion Women's Triathlon captured the second straight women's national championship in the university history at the USAT Nationals. And whereas Lenorion's team scored of 847, captured the Division II national title ahead of Gwengate and Colorado Mesa. Whereas with the victory, head coach Harley Mason was named the National Coach of the Year for the second straight season." Yeah, she deserves a round of applause for that. And that gives me time to get some of these names pronounced right, perhaps. It says, "Whereas Sabrina Flyja crossed the line as the top finisher among all NCAA Division II athletes. And whereas Zolea Celicia, I think, was named the National Freshman of the Year." Was that right? Pronounce it correctly.
Flyja.
Okay. What she said. Okay. And whereas Lenorion had seven players earn All-American honors, and whereas Zoila Cecilia, Cecilia, okay, was second for Lenorion and fourth overall. Whereas Alishka Rehova, was that close?
That over.
Okay. Okay. Was sixth overall. And Claudia Turin, Claudia, is Claudia here? Okay. And Claudia Turan, is it Turin or Turan? Turin. Okay. Was eighth overall and fourth on Lenorion. Whereas Teresa Vassilla, Vassilla?
Vasselli.
Teresa Vasselli and Sadie Plank. I think I got Sadie Plank right. Okay. Sadie Plank rounded out the top finishers for Lenorion along with Nanette Nick O'Leison. Nanette Nick O'Leison. Okay. All right. So now therefore, I ain't guess, see, that's real easy. Mayor of the City of Hickory, on behalf of the Hickory City Council, do hereby recognize the Lenorion Women's Triathlon and congratulate them on their prestigious championship and commend them for their hard work and dedication to the team this sixth day of February 2024. All right, Kim?
And I might say this also, not to take anything away from this women's triathlon team, but Coach Doug was named today, and we had a press presentation for that. So Lenorion continues to grow and change, and they continue to breed champions and start, not only start athletes, but their GPAs are riding high and above...
3.4.
What?
3.4, I heard.
3.4. So it's not just about sports and athletics, it's about athletics as well.
If you put two of my...
We couldn't be more proud of all their accomplishments.
Did you remember what GPA was with Hickory?
3.9.
3.9? Yeah.
I think there's another presentation. All right. So at this time, I would also like to ask Tammy Mueller, Executive Director of Strategic Business Partnership and Skills USA, and Gary Mueller, the Executive Dean of Economic Development and Corporate Education at Catawba Valley Community College, to the podium for a second special presentation. Are they here? They may not be here.
Well, we'll recognize them anyway. What is that called? Is that inattention?
That's what that's called when you're not here. I think that's what it's called.
All right.
I'll just take this one back and read it where everybody can hear.
All right. So the week of February 5 through the 9, 2024, has been designated by the Skills USA National Association as Skills USA Week. Whereas career and technical education provides students with a school-to-careers connection and is the backbone of a strong and educated workforce that fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to leadership in the national and global economies. Whereas career and technical education offers students opportunities to learn skills and to have career experiences that may lead to further education or meaningful employment. Whereas Skills USA is a national organization for students, preparing more than 380,000 members annually enrolled in technical, skilled, and service occupation in middle schools, high schools, and colleges, post-secondary programs to be high-performance workers. Therefore, be it resolved that I ain't guess, Mayor of the City of Hickory, on behalf of Hickory City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of February 5 through the 9, 2024, as Skills USA Week in the City of Hickory, and urge all of its citizens to acquaint themselves with the mission of Skills USA and to give support to the members who are working hard to achieve the goals that will make them outstanding skilled workers in our communities. And you can applaud for any of them even though they're not here. I want to, Councilman Tony Wood is not able to be here with us this evening. He had a planned, he volunteered and registered himself for a week-long advanced leadership training through the UNC School of Government. So he's furthering his leadership capabilities and his education, and his wife and children are having a little break. So that's why he's not here with us, and that explains his absence from the council meeting this evening. So I wanted to let you know about that. All right. We're getting ready to start with the rest of our meeting here, but before we get started, I just want to say that there's agendas available at the entrance to the council chambers that will help you to follow the flow of this meeting. In addition to the format of the meeting, there is a section on the last page that explains our ordinance and city code related to conducting meetings and related to your conduct during a meeting. And I'll have some more rules and information pertaining to that as we go through the meeting this evening. All right. Next on the agenda is persons requesting to be heard. I'll just say that please don't confuse this opportunity with the opportunity that you may have or will have to speak during a public hearing that is on the agenda tonight. This is a separate time, and it's allotted for someone that wants to speak on basically any topic, and this will be limited to three minutes. So I will ask at this time if there's anyone that would like to address the council, and if so, I would ask that you come forward, that you state your name and address, and that you limit your conversation to three minutes or less. So at this time, if there's anyone that would like to do that, please approach the podium. All right. There doesn't appear to be anyone that would like to take advantage of that time to speak. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of our minutes from our regular meeting of January the 16th, 2024.
Move approval. Second.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right. That matter carries unanimously. Next on our agenda is item number seven, the reaffirmation and ratification on second reading. Once again, I'll entertain a motion and discussion.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. That carries unanimously. Item number eight is our consent agenda. At this time, I'll ask if there's any member of council or staff that would like to have any items removed from the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda. Second.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion concerning the consent agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right. The consent agenda passes unanimously. We have two public hearings this evening, I believe. Is that correct? We have two public hearings. So to introduce our first public hearing, I'll call upon our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Guess, members of city council, Mr. Swanson. First public hearing tonight is consideration of closing a portion of First Avenue Southeast, a portion of Eighth Street Court Southeast, a portion of Second Avenue Drive Southeast, and unnamed alley located off Second Avenue Drive Southeast as petitioned by Joe Giata LLC and Linda H. Huffman. It will be presented by Public Works Director Steve Miller.
Thank you, council and mayor, for having me before you not. Mayor Guess, members of council, Mr. Swanson, Mr. Wood. I have before you a, seems kind of complicated, but it's really not, street closure petition. So the city, it's a two-party petition. The city clerk received a petition from Joe Giata LLC and Linda Huffman to close a portion of First Avenue Southeast, a portion of Eighth Street Court Southeast, a portion of Second Avenue Drive Southeast, and an unnamed alley. The aforementioned areas are bound by the properties owned by the petitioners, Joe Giata LLC and Linda Huffman. Public utilities advise First Avenue Southeast and Eighth Street Court Southeast both have public water and sewer infrastructure that is in service. These utilities serve properties that are not a part of this closing. A 25-foot utility easement needs to be recorded from this infrastructure, or appropriate relocation and easements need to take place at the requestor's cost. So there's the first area that LR Boulevard is there to the left. Over here is LR Boulevard. Here is Tate Boulevard. So these areas are currently, do not have anything on the actual site itself. This is the unopened alley. As you can see, it won't, when I show you the aerial, you'll see that this never actually came to fruition. This plat was recorded in 1924. So this is the area that gives you a better idea from the aerial. You have Tate Boulevard here and LR Boulevard here. This was an old section of named First Avenue Southeast. This is Eighth Street Court through here, and then Second Avenue place right here. This is the little unnamed alley I was talking about. As you can see, none of these streets were ever put into play or had houses on them. I think there may have been a section here that at one time had some houses along here that have been since torn down. The Linda Huffman owns this piece of property here. All of these other tracks throughout this whole site are owned by Joe Giata LLC. So the unused portion there, I'm not going to read all that again. I won't bore you with that. But staff requests council approval of a resolution in order of closing these portions of unused street sections. And I would entertain any questions if anyone has any.
Anybody have questions for Mr. Miller? All right. Thank you, sir. I'll just say, there are a few seats available if you're standing and would like to have a seat. There are a few seats available, so you're certainly welcome to occupy those seats if you would like. All right. So in just a few minutes, I'll be opening the public hearing in reference to the road closure that you've just heard described by Mr. Miller. But before I do that, I want to read some rules pertaining to public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight, so the rules that I'm about to read obviously pay attention to them because they pertain to both public hearings and all of our public hearings. We obviously have a crowd here tonight, some of which I expect are wanting to speak at a public hearing. As a matter of fact, we have some that are signed up. At this time, I'm going to explain the rules that our ordinances set out regarding public hearings. Per our code, each side, the opponents and proponents involved in a public hearing are allowed up to 15 minutes total to make their presentations. That means that those speaking against will be allowed 15 minutes, and those speaking for will allow 15 minutes. Those who desire to speak opposing the proposed action will speak first, and then those who desire to speak in favor will also be allowed up to 15 minutes to make their presentation as well. After both sides have spoken initially, if necessary, there could be five minutes total allotted for rebuttal from those against, and then five minutes total allotted for rebuttal for those that are in favor. It would be to your benefit, timewise, not to repeat something that has already been stated. Once again, the 15 minutes is total. It's not per person. We look forward to an orderly meeting. Whether you agree or disagree with the speaker, no matter if they are opposed or in favor, we expect you to be courteous and respectful of their stance. I will not allow any disruptions. This means no signs, no clapping, no jeering, no cheering, no comments made from your seat, or any other outbursts deemed disruptive during this meeting. If you cannot refrain from disruptions, you will be asked to leave the council chambers. If you remain and continue to disrupt the meeting, you will be deemed out of order and escorted from the council chambers. Our goal is to have an orderly meeting and to allow public input in a respectable and courteous fashion. If need be, I will repeat these rules, but I trust that everyone in here understands. So we will proceed with the meeting, and at this time, I will declare the public hearing open for our first public hearing. And I have a sheet here to where speaking against, it looks like Gary Ab...
No. Staff needs to present.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So you're getting ahead of yourself.
Yeah, I was getting ahead of myself.
Can I have staff, could get maybe a dozen chairs out of one of the meeting rooms so folks don't have to stand up and be more comfortable? Maybe Dave? Thank you. All right. Second public hearing tonight is consideration of rezoning petition.
We haven't done the first public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm out.
Now you're getting ahead of yourself.
It's contagious.
So we're going to wait on them to get the chairs?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So I'm going to declare the public hearing open and allow those first that are opposed to speak for 15 minutes. So the first person is Gary Abernathy. So Gary Abernathy would come forward, I'll allow him to begin.
For this public hearing? I think that's for the next public hearing.
No, he's for the first one. You're for the first, you're for the closure, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
All right. Okay.
No, I'm for the Mountain View rezoning.
Okay.
That's next.
Well, this says first public hearing, Gary Abernathy.
I was trying to find the wrong paper.
It's okay, you can come back.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Abernathy. Is there anybody here that wants to speak in opposition of the first public hearing that's been described by Mr. Miller?
Mr. Abernathy, we'll get you.
Yeah, you'll have a seat, sir. I'm sorry.
This out of order is contagious.
Well, it says first public hearing on the sheet.
All right.
Okay. All right.
Go to your room.
All right. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition for the first public hearing that's been described and been presented? The closure of the road. Okay. There being no one desiring to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone desiring to speak in favor. Okay. There being no one desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and I'll entertain a motion or discussion from council.
I'll move approval of the closure.
Second.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion from council or staff? There being no further discussion, I'll declare, I'll call for a vote and ask for all those in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right. That carries unanimously. All right. Now we're ready for the second public hearing. Once again, I'll call upon our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood, to introduce our second public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Guess, members of city council. Second public hearing is consideration of rezoning petition 24-02 requested by Gregory Williams for 29.59 acres owned by GTC Investment Properties LLC located on Highway 127 South between Moss Farm Road and Nello Drive and be presented by Planning Director Brian Frazier.
Good evening, mayor, members of council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Swanson. Yeah, tonight we have rezoning petition 2402. As Mr. Wood elaborated on, the location is Highway 127 South between Moss Farm Road and Nello Drive. The current zoning is City of Hickory Low Density Residential R1 and City of Hickory Commercial Corridor CC2. And I'll show you where this is located on some maps in a few moments. The property size is just under 30 acres, currently consisting of four separate parcels. Just some background on this. The applicant submitted a petition requesting to rezone the subject properties from low-density residential R1 and commercial corridor CC2 to a planned development, a PD. Note that the subject properties have previously been annexed by Hickory City Council. These four parcels are in the southernmost city zone properties along Highway 127 South. In fact, these four subject properties tonight are the furthest properties that have been annexed into the city. So anything south of that is within Catawba County's jurisdiction, both in terms of zoning and governmental. This property, the properties were annexed within a few years of when I started here back in the day, and a rezoning at the time for apartment uses was denied by council. That was probably back in maybe 2007 or so, but the properties had been annexed, but they had never been given a zoning designation. And that was many council people and a couple managers ago. So Mr. Kandilis at the time, who was the point person, which I think evolved into GTC Investments Properties LLC, had brought numerous proposals before staff that never made it to the planning commission because they either didn't comply at the time with the Hickory Future Land Use and Transportation Plan, or Hickory By Choice 2030, or whatever comply with state and federal law, or our land development code. So there was numerous other proposals that never made the light of day. So the request here is for a planned development proposed to be primarily residential, market rate in nature. Development on the parcels would consist of 198 single-family residential units. The development would include two out parcels for future non-residential development that is right along the highway 127 on the west side. It's currently zoned CC2. You can see the subject area right along in here, and the yellowish in nature is currently low-density residential. And then the pinkish area, pink reddish area, is the commercial corridor. So this property takes in about 400 feet, maybe, if that much, of commercial corridor, and the balance of the property is R1 in zoning designation. The zoning map itself, you can see here, the subject property outlined in the red in the hash. As I said, the balance of the property is R1. The front of the property is CC2. Anything that is in this area here, down here in that yellow, that is county R20 zoning designation. The blue piece here is OI City of Hickory. We have the commercial corridor here, and then on this side as well as in that purple shading, and then the pinkish reddish shading here and along Bethel Church Road, and then down here along the 127 corridor, and this node here, this is all county highway commercial. So basically, with this property here, you have commercial, which I'll show you on the maps, to the north and to the south, and most of the area here on this side is residential in nature, except as highway commercial, and then the existing business development across the street from 127 South that's currently City of Hickory CC2. This is the first aerial ortho of the property again. This is the first aerial ortho of the property, again, hashed out in red. These are the four subject parcels. This is one-twenty-seven from north to south. This is, there's commercial development here. Here's Mountain View Hardware, which is in the limits of the county of Catawba. And then you have a gas station, I believe a Mexican restaurant, and then the food line, shopping plaza here that extends to the north. So this is commercial. The next parcel I just wanted to show you again, another aerial ortho is more aerial photography that shows the, in the light blue right here, this is the subject property. And you can see in the text boxes in the yellow, those are both, most are in the county. Those are existing major subdivisions that have been in the neighborhood for, in the area for some, quite some time. Next thing I want to talk to you about a little bit is the water supply watershed. This is the area in the crosshatch, I realize it's a little, it's a little hard to see, but all of this area across the street from the proposed subdivision, including touching the subdivision for maybe about a hundred or so feet, this is part of the Jacob's Fork watershed. So we'll get to talk about that a little bit, too. So the Jacob's Fork Water Supply Watershed is classified as a WS3, protected. Parcels greater than one acre must comply with the watershed requirements. Both planned out parcels are less than one acre in size, but all non-residential development shall be subject to a maximum impervious coverage limit of twenty-four percent. The Jacob's Fork watershed is somewhat more restrictive in many ways than the Lake Hickory watershed. So for the rezoning petition twenty-four oh-two for development potential, the current low-density residential R1 zoning allows for primarily residential uses. As currently zoned, the subject properties could theoretically, that's taking into consideration streams, topography, parking, sidewalks, other impervious surfaces, could yield up to two-hundred-and-fifty-four dwelling units with seven acres of commercial, CC2, two-hundred-and-ten apartments, twenty-two acres of residential R1. We'll get into that a little bit more later as well. The potential uses for the R1 zoning include single-family attached and detached homes. So single-family attached is basically your townhomes. Mobile homes and mobile home parks are allowed in the R1. We've had those proposals and shot them down before. Group living facilities, telecommunication towers, family care homes, group living facilities, religious institutions, schools, RV parks, et cetera. That's not a complete list, but that covers quite a few of the uses, potential uses. In the CC2, again, not every use, but residential development, and this would be right along one-twenty-seven corridor, that CC2 that I showed you before in the purple color, that would allow thirty units of, thirty units per acre, multifamily use apartments. It would also allow retail uses, professional offices, personal services, medical centers, and colleges, as well as parks and playgrounds, et cetera, in that zoning district. For the rezoning petition itself and the planned development regulations, I'm not going to read every single bullet, but there's about, at least twelve, about twelve of them. For the minimum acreage for a PD is two acres, which this project easily meets, and council could go as high with a maximum density of twenty units per acre. I believe the applicants this evening, which they can speak for themselves, are looking at a density of about six-point-seven acres per unit. So the applicants are required to submit a plan, development master plan, that includes the following, and that could be anything from the scale, the North Arrow, the name of the developer, all the way down to progress creek layout, subdivision, location of parking, roads, all of that. Most of these things are done through a combination of city council, and then some are more defined after, because should the rezoning be approved, then it would still have to go through an extensive process and get sign off by the state of North Carolina, two different Catawba County departments, and then all of the, pretty much all the departments dealing with development within the City of Hickory. So again, a development background, the plans depict properties as totaling one-hundred-and-ninety-eight single-family residential units, one-hundred-and-eighteen of those are single-family detached, and eighty townhomes. In total, the proposed development, as I said before, would have a density of roughly six-point-seven units an acre, and the development density is proposed to be approximately one-third of the maximum density of twenty units per acre as allowed by the land development code for the planned development regulations in Article Five. There are, again, two proposed out parcels for future non-residential development that total approximately one-point-five-seven acres, and that would be restricted to some extent by the Jacob's Fork watershed. The development proposed would include a small amenity area with designated open space and a dog park for the residents of the property. You can see the outline of the property here. This is one-twenty-seven heading to the south. You've got the two proposed commercial properties in here. This area here and here, this is, the green, the green symbols, I had a few questions from residents wanting to know the green symbols, where those are just trees. They look like sequoias at this scale, but they're trees. You can see the white lines are the internal road network. Everything in these areas are single-family detached, and everything here is single-family attached townhomes. I believe most of the buildings, if not all, have five units within each structure. And then you can see stormwater control measures. There's a stream that runs through the property. The next slide here that I'm presenting, it's a little difficult to see at this scale, but this is basically a more pronounced, detailed site plan of the PD requirements. You've got the various parcels outlined, you've got the road network, the townhomes, the, all of the notes, all the proper blocks, the name of the development, the professionals aligned with it, the North Arrow, the vicinity map here in the top left, and here you've got street sections, and a microcosm look of how the townhouses would be laid out, as well as the cul-de-sacs, and again, road cross-sections and layouts as required in the city's manual of practice, which falls under Mr. Miller's department. Again, for, I'm not going to read all of this, but within the Goals and Policies section of Chapter Three of the Hickory By Choice Comprehensive Plan, a number of goals and policies are provided that address development. And you can read here, as was in your packet sent to you, the various goals of Hickory By Choice. So for the recommended action, staff is recommending the following. The adoption of a statement affirming the petition's consistency with the Hickory By Choice 2030 Comprehensive Plan. The development of the property shall adhere to the regulations provided in the land development code, and again, other applicable county, state, and federal standards. City staff recommends that we follow the DOT recommendations, that a track, the Impact Analysis, TIA, be conducted before the project startup. Based upon the findings, the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, back on the twenty-fourth of January, voted six to one, with one member absent to recommend approval of the petition. Another recommendation would be a recommendation of approval to Hickory City Council. And as of yesterday, staff had received two or three walk-ins that were requesting the plans and asking questions, and about twenty or so citizen phone calls, again, about the petition to the planning staff. And I'd be more than happy to address any questions that you may have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. I'll start us off, I have a couple questions. So am I correct that as the property is currently zoned now, without any action from council or any intervention by anybody that might be here tonight, that the front portion of that, that's an acre and a half roughly, could accommodate up to thirty or forty apartments, and the remaining backside of that, if you will, could, could possibly have as many as sixty mobile homes or trailers as it's currently zoned today, without any, without any real authorization or rezoning or anything?
The last part of the question first is, yes, in the R1, because of about twenty-nine point acres, you could have about fifty-eight single-family homes, or duplexes, or mobile homes within the R1. And in the CC2, because you're looking at a density of thirty units an acre, again, you've got, you could have about forty, because you have one-point-five-seven acres, but that would be limited by the Jacob's Fork watershed. But as you detailed, yes, sir, that's, that's correct.
Okay. Is it also fair to say that with that, with that, they, would they have to change any entrances or anything for that, or how would that work?
There would be two new entrances that in a preliminary pre-application meeting, that city traffic, public services, the city fire department, life safety division, and our regional NC DOT agreed upon two entrances into the property from Highway one-twenty-seven.
Okay. Could you elaborate just a little bit on planned development and what all that entails as far as the difference?
Well, like, R1 and CC2 are considered base zoning districts. A planned development, if you will, is an overlay or a zoning designation permitted under North Carolina general statute that pretty much is an overlay or supersedes the base zoning districts. And again, the base here of CC2 and R1. So if you're looking at a planned development that requires council approval, if you were so inclined, and the planned development is the strictest form of zoning that any municipality has under its control, because you are looking at this plan tonight, you are looking at the road entrances, you are looking at the street network, you are looking at the density count, the number of homes, you are looking at the open space, the stormwater control measures, et cetera, et cetera. If any of that changes in a major way, such as if the applicant, should this be rezoned, come to me later and say, Brian, we changed our mind, this is all apartments? No, they got to start from scratch with another public hearing at the Planning Commission, another public hearing before you at the Hickory City Council. With a planned development, staff knows what we're getting, the residents know what they're getting, and the city administration, including the elected body, the city council, knows what they're getting. Anything that is a major change to the planned development would have to, would basically be revoked, and the process would have to start all over again. So we're looking at one-hundred-and-ninety-eight units here, you know, if this was rezoned in a couple of years down the road, we got a question, well, we want to be three-hundred units. No, that's not going to happen. Now, they could say, we want to go down to one-fifty, then that's a minor, and that, by statute, myself as the planning director, could, could approve that. But the PD is like a conditional use district, where there is almost a contract between a developer, the city, and the residents, so they know exactly what they're getting. For example, if this property wasn't rezoned, I mean, you could see the various duplexes, single-family houses, mobile homes, that could go on it. If you rezoned it to like an R4, which my staff and I, and I'm sure Planning Commission wouldn't have recommended, it could be at a much higher density and allow pretty much every housing unit except mobile homes. So the PD is the most restrictive form, and everybody knows what they're getting.
Okay. Is, did we also just recently learn that DOT plans for a traffic impact analysis as related?
Yes, I found that, yes, sir. Yes, mayor, I found that out recently. I, I believe that DOT was looking at doing a traffic analysis for the proposed road widening of one-twenty-seven south that we've heard about for a number of years. That's been pun intended, kicked down the road to at least twenty-seven or twenty-eight. But now for this project, DOT has come back in correspondence with me, that they, since the Planning Commission, mind you, that they are going to require a transportation impact analysis for this project.
And that further enhances the development overall, potentially?
Well, it, it looks at the whole traffic situation, but it also looks at the safety of residents traversing one-twenty-seven north and south, and the residents of any proposed subdivision or those commercial entities, whether they can turn right or left. I mean, I'm sure, I heard nothing about signalization, that could be a possibility of DOT. I won't, I won't know. And there could be such as right in, right out, deceleration lanes, acceleration lanes, there's, there's a lot that's factored in that TIA. But it would, it would address the traffic flow, and it would address safety concerns.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Frazier?
I have, I have one on the, you said there's going to be two entrances?
Yes, sir.
And they're both on one-twenty-seven?
Yes, sir.
No other entrances anywhere?
There's no other way to access the property unless the developers bought other pieces of property. I know, I think, I'm pretty sure they made a couple offers to other residents, but the other residents didn't want to sell. But DOT, public services, including traffic, and the fire department and my office did agree on a pre-application basis that those two entrances would be, would be okay.
Brian, I want to say thank you so very much for the tremendous work that you continue on doing for the city.
Thank you, sir.
Just to drive home, just to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, that while it is on the low density of R1, that a mobile home park can be developed there. Now, once it is, whether we vote for it or not, if it then goes to CC2, can mobile homes still be developed in?
Mobile homes cannot be placed in a CC2 district.
Okay. And second of all, I saw that there was a vote in the Planning Commission, I believe, six to one?
Yes, sir, you're correct.
Now, did I hear you correctly? Was that the one that was just absent, or they voted against it?
One person was absent, and one person voted against the proposal, for he didn't, he didn't, since it was a legislative hearing and not quasi-judicial, he didn't have to state the reasons for his denial, but he, he did vote against it.
Okay, so he did not state the reason?
No, sir.
Also, I see that there are many of the citizens that live in that area, and they're getting ready to come and voice their concerns and their convictions. So wanted to know, as the Planning Commission got together, what were many of the concerns of the citizens that are here now at that Planning Commission?
Sure. And, and I can't speak for them, I'll just try to elaborate briefly, is they were concerned about additional development. They were concerned about environmental conditions in terms of stormwater runoff, the creek, sedimentation. They were concerned about traffic adding on to the population base. They were concerned about the impact to the school district, how many more students this would bring in to the various schools in, in that county. But I think their biggest concerns were the density of the development, the impacts on the current educational system, and the impacts on the road network and traffic.
I did have a question. Can you just give us the differential in terms of, because capacity, I've spoken to a number of people, and capacity seems to be the overriding issue in terms of the number of units?
Yes.
So can you do kind of a comparison of R1, how it's currently zoned, and the, you know, upper level of what could be built on there with the planned development that's being proposed?
Well, a few, a few years ago, the Census Bureau was figuring about two-point-three children per household, I believe that- I believe that's now down to like one-point-six-six, six-seven children per household. I understand that the Mountain View Elementary, which I hear is a very good school, that they are close to running at capacity now, where some of the other elementary schools in a district are below capacity. One thing I found out from a person I know, and this is hearsay, but his grandson was at one elementary school in the district and moved to the Mountain View Elementary School for a, he said it was for a fee. I'm not aware of that, that's the first time I heard that, so I don't know if that has anything to do with the capacity. But definitely, the rate of live births has substantially gone down in the last decennial census.
I was actually thinking of housing units. I know, education and the capacity was an issue. I think we received some information that that's not usually being considered in...
Right, I mean, the, right, and under North Carolina general statute, and I'm sorry if I got off base from your question, but the planning commission and council basically have nothing to do with the school enrollment, or the capacity, or any type of notification of the school beyond the public realm, and that type of notification about the number of new housing units that would come on, and if, what, how, what school district, and what specific school they would impact. We've seen that in other places where there was redistricting measures because of that.
And I was on the school board for eight years, and know that when there is a demographic shift, where there's an increase, the school district has to accommodate the students. And I think we got a couple of reports from the council of government saying there's some under-populated schools actually in that area.
In that district, from my understanding, yes, some of the schools are quite under-populated.
Brian, one question.
Thank you.
When they do the traffic impact analysis, they could recommend signalization?
They could, yes, ma'am. They could also recommend acceleration or deceleration lanes. And, you know, I have not seen, I don't know if any of us have seen, the most recent version of North Carolina DOT plans for how mu, what type of widening they're going to do. I mean, I know the extent pretty much north-south, but the widening, I don't know how much new right-of-way, you know, they're going to require. But I'm assuming they could ask for signalization, they could talk about limiting the movement right-in, right-out, they could ask for acceleration or deceleration lanes, as they've done for other projects.
And we know DOT is reactive, not proactive, just like the schools.
I'll plead the fifth, though.
Wise.
Very much.
Any other, am I also correct that staff has turned down proposals up to and over five-hundred units for this particular parcel, and several other proposals that were four or five-hundred units?
Yes, sir, in two parts. I mean, as I mentioned earlier, between 2007 and this proposal just brought us a couple of months ago, staff has turned down at least half a dozen to a dozen proposals that never saw the day in front of the planning commission or city council. And when we first received plans for this, there was more of a multifamily component, over five-hundred units. And after a couple of meetings, pre-application meetings, it was brought down to the one-ninety-eight that staff could live with in terms of complying with Hickory by Choice and the Land Development Code.
Any other questions for Mr. Frazier? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I thought, all right, so we're getting ready to have our second public hearing, and in just a few minutes, I'll declare that public hearing open. But before I do that, of course, I'm not going to read all the rules again, but I do want to reiterate that I am going to pay attention to our rules, and I hope that you will also. It's our intention that everyone gets to voice their opinion. Obviously, there are restrictions to that. I would highly recommend that you not be repetitive in something that has already been stated, or something that has already been said. I can assure you that myself and probably every council member up here and our staff have spoke with some of you individually, either on the phone or in person, and that all the correspondences, all the emails, everything, we've shared with each other, it's been circulated with staff, it's been reviewed, and we are continuing to consider everything that's been put before us, including those of you who may wish to speak this evening. All right. Having said that, I will declare the public hearing open, and once again, allow Mr. Gary Abernathy to the podium. And if you would, for the record, as you come to the podium, if you would please, state your name and address. Our clerk will be keeping a timer, fifteen minutes for those in opposition, and then we will allow up to fifteen minutes for those who are in favor. Mr. Abernathy, go ahead, please.
My name is Gary Abernathy. I live at 4394 NC Highway 127 South. This is way overkill on the amount of units for this amount of land. And I want to know, and I'm not planning on getting an answer, but what are the Mountain View residents going to benefit from this? That's one concern. What's it going to benefit us? And who's going to gain out of it? I'm sure your planning commission voted the way y'all would have wanted them to, but they weren't, but one that listened to this group in here voted against it. We just well not even showed up, because they paid no attention to what we'd done. And I feel like y'all are probably going to do the same thing. I hope I'm wrong. But just can pass this, and the next time you have to run for reelection, just can campaign on how much you've increased the city Hickory's tax base. And these, this big developer out of Florida, he's going to make his, take his profits and take it back to Florida. It ain't going to stay in Mountain View. It's going back to Florida. And we've got enough problems in Mountain View without the additional traffic that that's going to cause. If you get over there at four, five o'clock in the afternoon and try to come out on 127 to make a left turn, you out of luck. Highway 127 north got to be worse than this before it ever got corrected. And my understanding is the state has put a hole on this project over there, and they've changed their mind and planned the time or two. And if it goes like the city did in, they did in 127 north, it'll be five or ten years before that road's done. Because you just know how long they drug along doing that, along with Highway 321. They spent twenty years just railing Highway 321 before they ever built it. And this will be a little bit of the same thing. As far as the environment, I'm all the time reading in the paper where the city Hickory has a sewer spill at one of these pump stations or whatnot, and them things are not, they're not fail-proof. It's just a matter of when the spill will happen, and that little creek out there on that property, because these pump stations are not foolproof. And they always claim in the news when they have a spill, so many thousand gallons, I don't know how they measure that, but they always say it was no danger to the environment. While they have treatment plants, if it's no danger, just dump it all in the creek. And Hickory's got enough problems of their own with the traffic, the homeless people, and the sewage spills that they have all the time. And at that hearing the other week for the planning commission, there was one person spoke for it, it was the only person spoke for it. And I'd like to ask again, how is this going to help Mountain View residents? I don't expect to get no answers to this, and I expect y'all to prove it, just like your planning board did. Because, hey, and another thing, us people in Mountain View do not get to vote to pull any of y'all out of office. We've got no say-so. And you've got jurisdiction over us, but we've got no say-so on even voting for or against y'all. I hope I made my point clear. If anybody's got any questions, or anything I said wrong, I'll be glad to correct it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Angela Christopher. And by the way, I'm not going any particular order, it's just, we've got three sheets here.
Good afternoon, or evening, rather, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Angela Christopher. I live at 4239 River Road. My family's been on the same property since 1885. I have seen a lot of changes. Now, I'm not that old, but I did see Highway 321 get built, and I thought it was amazing watching that highway getting built. But something that we have to remember about Highway 321, just as the gentleman stated, and just like the gentleman stated, about a traffic impact analysis, that that first stage emptied right into 127. I provided you with a map tonight.
We have it.
Fortunately, I don't have enough for everyone. But this is the NC Department of Transportation's annual average daily traffic, daily traffic map. I have got all of the ramps that are marked coming eastbound and westbound from I-40, they come straight down onto Highway 321. You have to make an immediate left onto 321, or you end up on exit 42, which is Highway 127. At that point, at exit 42, which is the exit you would have to take to go to this development, there are already forty thousand cars going through here daily, right before the light on Zion Church Road. I've made my exit, I finally have made it to 127, I've got to Zion Church Road, I'm still at twenty-three thousand five hundred cars before we have to narrow down to one lane. So it's right, guys, 2027 is when the Department of Transportation is planning on widening 321. I'm just simply asking, let's not put the car in front of the horse. Build the road, and then invite the neighbors in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Charles Bolick.
I live at 1822 Wood Ridge Circle in the Wood Ridge community in Mountain View. I sent all of you an email, and I hope you had a chance to read it. I am a lifelong resident of Hickory, and I've seen, obviously, it's already been stated many changes in my sixty-nine years here. One thing I wanted to point out was that you have the Hickory by Choice Comprehensive Plan for 2030. And from the 2022 update, it states, "While Hickory is a diverse place, residents appreciate harmony. As the city manages development, it should keep in mind that balance and compatibility are important characteristics. This guides the designation of land uses on the Comprehensive Plan map, informs zoning district standards, and shapes land use and subdivision approvals. New uses must fit in, respecting the context in which they are set." As we've seen, the developer wants to build a hundred and eighteen single-family homes and eighty townhomes. That density would not fit in with the existing subdivisions in Mountain View. The nearby subdivisions, West Overwoods, Wood Ridge, Meadow Brook Village, Plaza Ridge, Homestead, Clearview Acres, and Forest Ridge, all average anywhere from four-tenths to six-tenths, even up to one-point-one acres per unit. Obviously, this proposed density will vastly exceed that. In 1979, AT&amp;T launched a commercial, had a little jingle in it, said, "Reach out and touch someone." Well, with the proposed density, neighbors in that development could reach out out of their windows and touch their neighbors. I recently traveled to the coast and back. On the way there and back, we passed many new developments where, again, the neighbors could just reach out and touch someone. And all these developments were cookie-cutter homes. It was very boring. We don't have boring-looking communities in Mountain View now, and I certainly don't want that to happen in the future. If this is approved, there will be more development. And I'm not opposed to development, it's just that we need to control the density and plan smartly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doug Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I want to thank Mr. Williams for meeting, the developer, for meeting with several of the residents earlier this week, so that they could share some of their concerns. I'm not going to repeat the things that the gentleman said about the density, but we recognize in the map that staff showed that your Hickory by Choice 2030 plan shows most of this property as being low-density residential. And Section 3.1.2 of the Land Development Code, Characteristics of Residential Zones, A, the low-density R1 district implements the low-density residential policies of the Hickory by Choice Comprehensive Plan, and it allows a maximum of two dwelling units per acre. That's what your planning document outlines. This project is well beyond that. The, in the presentation earlier, the goals that Mr. Frazier didn't read, but he provided for you guys to look at, goal number one says expects new development to fit in. This density proposed does not fit in with the surrounding areas. The lot sizes that Mr. Williams proposing of fifty-one thousand square feet, I mean, fifty-one hundred square feet, is a third the size of the smallest lots in the surrounding area. Goal number two says that neighborhoods should be designed to provide pedestrian access to daily services. There are no sidewalks in Mountain View for people to walk to. So, this development does not meet that goal. This project in no way is consistent with the Hickory by Choice 2030 Comprehensive Plan, and it doesn't conform with that plan. The rezoning, if you look at some of the language in your land use code, it says that a rezoning is not, should be in response to changing conditions or reasonably necessary to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. In this project, there are no changes in the area that would warrant a rezoning. There is a need for housing in the area, we all recognize that. There is, there is a right for this property owner to develop their property. We agree to that, just not at a density of six-point-seven units per acre. The increased traffic imperviousness of the development density and the school crowding and the strains on other services in the community does not promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. So, if the council chooses to approve this project, I ask you not to say that the project is consistent with the Hickory by Choice 2030 Comprehensive Plan, because it is not. If the purpose is for, to provide more housing and to provide more revenue, and that's the council's choice, because you are elected to make that choice, even though none of us residents in Mountain View get to elect you, then please say-so. The last point I would like to make is, a portion of this development, and let's see, if you look along this corner of the property and this corner of the property is in, I lost it, is in the Duke Transmission right-of-way. If you choose to approve this project, and the developer can't build in those areas because it's in the right-of-way, please don't let them move those units somewhere else. Let's at least lower that density in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chad Stodden.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Chad Stodden. I live at 5768 Baker's Point in Mountain View in Hickory. I don't want to be repetitive. A lot of what I have here is semi-repetitive. I just want to state one thing up front is, you know, just because we can, doesn't necessarily mean that we should. I don't think, from here, from most of my neighbors, that any of us are against property development for residences on that property, or many other places in Mountain View. You know, residential building's going to come. Our biggest issue is with the volume and the density on frankly, what is a small piece of land. You know, we're being told it was twenty-nine-point-five-nine acres, but that's not necessarily twenty-nine-point-five-nine buildable acres. As was stated, six-point-seven residents per acre is based on... As was stated, six point seven residents per acre is based on twenty-nine point five nine acres. If you reduce what the actual buildable acreage is, then your residents per acre goes up to like eight and a half. So that's six point seven to me is very misleading. Also, what we haven't talked about is other approved City Hickory and Catawba County building that's already approved for Mountain View. This is just two hundred, one hundred ninety-eight, two hundred residents on this one spot of one twenty-seven. It's also noted, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there's a hundred and four units going in on Zion Church Road, forty units, Wallace View, twenty-five Braxton Gates. And then this, almost two hundred. So there's a lot going on in Mountain View besides just this one development. So if we're talking about vehicles and traffic, it's more than this one development. So you have to look at what you've already approved, and what's already on the books being built, and add this to it. And then what does that do to our traffic and safety in Mountain View? Schools. Mountain View Elementary is at a hundred and two percent capacity. Schools take a long time to fix. You know, I've heard that they can redistrict some of these schools and citizen everybody in Mountain View Elementary. They can go to Blackman Elementary, or potentially Star Town Elementary, because like I said, we have more than just this development. With what I have approved, including this development in Mountain View, you're looking at eleven hundred to twelve hundred new residents in Mountain View. The population in Mountain View right now is thirty-four hundred. So you're talking about increasing the population in Mountain View by a third with this building project, as well as the other building projects that are already approved. As well as all the children that would belong to all these residents. So.
Fifteen minutes.
Right, sir. Do you have something else to say that hasn't been said?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask that, I'm going to make a motion that we allow for someone to speak that's on the list to say something that has not already been said. So I'll allow the time, I'm making a motion that we allow the time for those that are in opposition, that are on the list, that have something to say that has not already been said. So I'm making that motion at this time.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like, son? All right. At this time, I'll call upon Sue Smolka, and please, if you have something that hasn't already been said, to say that.
My name is Sue Smolka, and I live at fifty-eight ninety-two Deerfield Lane in Hickory, North Carolina. And I believe if this petition violates any kind of rule or ordinance, then you're required to vote no. And we'll skip through a lot of it. If you are familiar, I'm sure you are. The Constitution of North Carolina, Article One, Declaration of Rights, Section Two, Sovereignty of the People. All political power is vested in and derived from the people. All government or right originates from the people, is founded upon their will only, and is instituted solely for the good of the whole. Your political power is invested in and derived from the people. We are the people. We're the people that hired you to represent us. Here is a map of the Mountain View area. Each red dot is a fatality in the Mountain View area with the current residents. The school buses in our area are crashing. There were eight accidents in the latest year that we had data for, three with injuries. And we're putting in all these new people to come to our schools. Again, from the North Carolina Constitution, Article One, Section fifteen, Education. The people have a right to the privilege of education. The duty of the government of the state is to guard and maintain that right. We've already heard about the Mountain View school being overcapacity. We've already heard about the buses crashing. We've already heard about the dangers on the highway. This rezoning is not in any way guarding our right to education. It's also not guarding our welfare. I talked to the superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent of Catawba County Schools. The schools are struggling with the growth that's happening on the north side of the county. It's unprecedented, unplanned, unrestricted, and it's taking all the resources that they can to accommodate those children. The Catawba County schools are understaffed, and that's in teachers, assistants, assistant teachers, in the cafeterias, in the janitorials, in all roles across the county. They simply can't hire enough people to man the schools, regardless of what the student base is. Now we're going to bring in two hundred more houses and the children associated with that. Lastly, you took an oath of office. I do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for that government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States to the best of my ability and knowledge. So help me God. Domestic tranquility is part of the Constitution of the United States. The North Carolina Constitution clearly states, "Your political power is vested in and derived from the people. The government of the right originates from the people, is founded upon their will only." We are the people. You're supposed to protect us. You're supposed to represent us, our interests, our safety, our education. To the people, I ask, if you're against this rezoning, please stand. We are the people. We, the people, are making our will abundantly clear. You took an oath to protect the Constitution. Your Constitution dictates that you listen to your citizens. Hear us. We have assembled to clearly let our will be known. Do your job. Vote no. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Jim Smolka.
My name is Jim Smolka. I also live at fifty-eight ninety-two Deerfield Lane, Hickory, North Carolina. My wife just spoke, in my opinion, very elegantly of the obligations here. I'm to talk about some of the history of Mountain View. You probably have heard before that there have been other proposals that have been put before this governing body and have rejected the high-density type use of this property. What makes Mountain View so unique is that it is not high-density. We moved to this area so that it would not be a high-density area. Mr. Abernathy, who spoke earlier, he developed one of the first subdivisions in the area, Deerfield. There was no complaints about this subdivision. Why? Because it fit into the views and opinions and beliefs of the people in Mountain View. This is what makes it special. It's a low-density area. He developed a subdivision in his family that was of a low-density type use. Now, years ago, when this was first defeated with this high-density area, it was because, well, it was high-density, and the people didn't want it. The people who were sitting in chairs where you are now voted against it. Why? Because the people spoke against it. We did not run a high-density area into Mountain View. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lorraine, and I can't hardly.
Saporito.
Saporito, okay, thank you.
I am not from here originally, as you can tell, so. Lorraine Saporito, fifty-fifteen Ouchre Park Drive. I spoke at the last meeting on January twenty-fourth, and I can't help but, you know, there are things that, especially Mr. Abernathy. But you pave Paradise and put up a parking lot, like, I moved here from Scranton, Pennsylvania. It is paved everywhere. It is high-density everywhere. It is neighborhoods with stoops. We are turning Mountain View into just a replication for tax revenue. You know, I heard you guys speak about these, almost like the way that you put it, almost like threats of trailer parks to us. Yes, that is a huge possibility, but that wouldn't serve you as well, because you wouldn't get the tax revenue for it. What is happening? I reached out and sent letters to all of you. I got one response. I sent out letters also to the Catawba County Board of Commissioners. I got a response from Mary Furtado, who pretty much said, "Hands off. It doesn't have to do with us." So this small portion of the fourth ward essentially has a voice for all of us. We don't elect you. We don't vote for you, but our county commissioners aren't representing us either. Paradise is being paved. The culture, this is not, you're right, I'm not from here. This isn't my, it is my adopted culture now. But I came here because of, it wasn't like Charlotte. It wasn't like Scranton. It wasn't like somewhere else. And I feel like all you guys are seeing is dollar signs. There is a whole culture that is beautiful. Some of you know it very intimately. It is being eradicated. I asked the board of the Catawba County folks, and I asked, "Has there been a meeting with you guys?" Has there? I didn't get any answer. I invited them here tonight, but they told me, "Hands off." Have you guys met with them? We have a small Mountain View area. I sent all of it to you in kind of an attachment to the email. The whole planning committee that was done in two thousand and two about Mountain View, where is that being held to standards? There should be some type of transparent communication to represent us as people that also represents what was laid out in that plan. I hope all of you guys have read it, because it really tells things really importantly. There is no planning thought. You know, when you just build just to create tax revenue just because you can, what are you creating? I don't know, but it's not for us. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Maria Araya.
Hello, Maria Araya, thirty-six ninety-four Serenity Drive, Hickory, North Carolina. As you can tell, everybody, we are all on the same page. The only few things that I would have to say is that Mr. Frazier brought up the developments going around the area. For some reason, between twenty-eight and thirty acres seems to be the magic number in Hickory. These comparable developments that are around, you are looking at about hundred, four hundred houses on thirty acres or twenty-eight point sixty acres. There's a lot of development going on, like everybody said it. I just have a quick question, and it would be that council members, if you can ask yourself what is best for Mountain View and the surrounding communities. If your answer is yes, you need to show it by allowing anywhere near the proposed hundred and ninety-eight houses project on this property not allowed. If you pass this proposal, you are saying that you know what's better for this community than the five hundred-plus neighbors in this community that have signed this petition in the past week, which I do have updated copies right here. Five hundred and sixty-five in all the signatures. Unfortunately, some, a lot of these people has to work, are not able to be here. They have family. They have other commitments. You are aware of that. But all I have to say is that ethics, responsibility, it has to do a lot with planning and growing for future, for a better future for everyone.
Thank you. Robert Carswell.
Robert Carswell, three-nine-seven-one South NC one-twenty-seven Highway. Second, everything has been said. Major concern is those two entrances into this new complex of housing. They're in close proximity to the Quality Plus Gas Station, El Cerrape Restaurant, although Food Line grocery store, that complex, Mountain View Home and Garden. I don't know where you shop, Mayor, but I don't know if you come out south. I know you live out in that area. And I just wonder how you feel about the impact on traffic that this project is going to have. Also, I've estimated that your revenue will probably be in excess of three hundred thousand dollars a year on this development. And I just hope that, pray that you guys will vote against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that's everybody that signed up to speak in opposition. We have one person that signed up to speak in favor, and I also have a letter to read from somebody that signed up to speak in favor. So I will allow, at this time, Greg Williams to speak in favor.
Good evening, counsel. My name's Greg Williams. I'm the managing partner of CCW Development Group. We're located at twenty-eight oh-five Walkup Avenue, Monroe, North Carolina. Joining me tonight is my engineer, Frank Craig, from Gastonia, as well as one of my partners, Perry Crook, who's also from Monroe. As Mr. Frazier noted, this site is approximately thirty acres, four tracts located along Highway one-twenty-seven. Current owner is GTC Investment Properties from Putagorda, Florida. The current zoning of this property is a combination, as been stated, of R-one and the commercial section in the front. Now, one thing I do want to clear up, as it is currently zoned, there is about seven acres of commercial property on the front of this. So I think there was something mentioned about one point five or one point eight. That seven acres would allow up to thirty units per acre in a multifamily designation by right. That's two hundred and ten apartments that could be built there. The remaining twenty-two acres, say twenty-two and a half acres, we could place forty-four single-family homes or forty-five single-family homes, that extra half acre. Could be forty-five duplexes, which that wouldn't work. It'd have to be forty-four, because duplexes are two. Or we could do the same in manufactured housing. That's by right. You add those together, by right, we can place two hundred and fifty-eight residents on this tract of land by the City Hickory zoning rules. This is a density of eight point seven four units per acre, which is greater than what we're proposing. Now, a little bit of the history of our going through this. When we contracted for this property, our intent was for residential purposes. We also knew that there was a industrial or commercial corridor, excuse me, along Highway one-twenty-seven. So we wanted to utilize that to some extent and not have residential boarding on to Highway one-twenty-seven. So hence the two commercial outparcels that we designed to go along that. There's been a lot of discussions about the number of units that we first proposed. That's true. We, in the planning process with staff, we went to look at several different concepts. The initial concept we came out with, and again, I'm a developer. It's a thankless job. Sometimes it's tough to be up here and speak against good people who enjoy their life and enjoy their lifestyle and don't want to see change. But as a developer, we bring change. In that process, when we initially designed this, it was about three hundred and ninety plus-rebonated apartments, about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty townhomes to be located on it. In our, what was called a pre-app meeting, and then our original TRC, staff pointed to numerous issues they felt that this plan entailed upon the property. We looked at the traffic situation, the two entrance ways going on the one-twenty-seven with that type of density. The fire marshal had a lot of concerns about safety, the depth that you see in the property where the current townhomes are located, how far we go off the street, that would inhibit their ability to service the area. We went back. We did a market analysis, talking to people that we deal with in our business. We saw some resistance to the potential of apartments. So we came back in and we looked at a different design. We had a second meeting with staff. We came back with three hundred and twenty attached single-family homes, townhomes. That number was still a higher density than what the fire marshal felt comfortable with. So again, this is all part of the planning process. It's not a vote. It's not a turn-down. It's just the process for us to work with staff to come up with what we think is the best and highest use for this property. Yesterday, we did have a, I had an impromptu meeting with a couple of the folks that are in the room tonight. A couple of them spoke. Also, I met at Mr. Randy Starin's home, because he had some concerns about drainage. So we wanted to reach out as best we could and talk to the folks and hear their concerns. And again, the biggest concern seems to be the density, and it seems to be the traffic. When our master plan, when we come back to work with staff, we ended up with a plan that you see today of a hundred and eighteen detached homes and eighty townhomes. We exceeded the requirement for open space. We wanted to protect it as best we could and buffer against the only blue line stream on the property, which is in the center. So we placed green space around that, and with staff's approval, we're not impacting that stream with any street crossings. So it's left as natural as possible. We added the dog park space. We're looking at the potential of walking trails around the stream. And of course, there'll be sidewalks that are required by the. And of course, there'll be sidewalks that are required by the city ordinance. All of this will be new construction for sale to future residents. Detached housing project, we're projecting four pricing points with different sized townhomes that will have one and two car garages. We project, and again, this is purely a projection, we don't know where the economy is going to go, we don't know where interest rates are going and where inflation is going to carry us. But we're projecting townhomes starting in the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar range, going up to three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The detached homes, we think, will start around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and go up, currently probably as high as a half a million dollars. As we went through this, this rezon, staff put in their input, we followed their input. We wanted to, to work within the constraints of the property, within the, uh, density that was allowed under PD zoning. And we come in with a six point seven units per acre, which is based upon the twenty-nine point five five acres that we have there. If you break that down and take out the commercial out parcels, take out the open space, we're at a density of, true density of about seven point six two units on the existing developable property. On the one point five seven acres on the two commercial out parcels, we could envision a coffee shop, envision a restaurant, some type of, uh, small commercial shopping. But again, there's going to be constraints in what we can do there because of the watershed area that we'll have to plan around and work with staff through our engineering process to determine what will fit there. In the T R C meeting, N C D O T was supportive of the two entrances. They requested at the time that the south be a restricted right-in, right-out only, and that the north, which is across from the, uh, convenience store, be a full-service entrance way. There's an existing center line, which, center lane, which gives us access of left turns going north and right turns going, uh, or left, um, excuse me, left turns going north, and the ability of the right turns to the right. But now, again, the N C D O T has come back up and recommended the T I A, which we'll comply with, and then we'll see what the recommendations are after the T I A. And that could very well change, it could be additional acceleration, deceleration lanes, it could be signalization. We won't know that until the traffic engineer conducts a study, and that is, uh, yeah, he scoped out by N C D O T and, and they approved that study. Of course, in our development agreement, we'll be constrained to follow what that T I A study reflects going forward. Fire and safety was satisfied with the two entrance way, they were satisfied with the total density. They liked the proper street radiuses and widths, the interconnectivity and the access in and out. We agreed as part of that process that each residence would have a residential sprinkler system to help with the safety in that. Uh, my understanding on residential sprinkler system, it works off a traditional, uh, water system into a, uh, single-family home with a sprinkler head on the main level to assist in, in extinguishing sudden fires and give the fire department a little additional time. Traffic was satisfied with the interconnectivity of the two entrance ways. Sanitation, planting, and stormwater were addressed, and those would be designed, subject to approval by town staff, the state, and of course, federal government, or any regulations which are applied. There are no environmental issues on this property. The stormwater and erosion control will have to be permitted and inspected on a regular basis during and after construction. And as we found, there were no evidence of school capacity issues. Yes, we do understand the Mountain View Elementary School is at capacity, but there's also, there seems to be additional capacity throughout the system. And we all know, as government, you can't build schools in anticipation of people coming. You build schools when you have people that are physically living there. The utility department, there is a twelve-inch water line on Highway one twenty-seven that has adequate capacity and adequate pressure to service the neighborhood. There is sewer located at the corner of the property. We would have to build at our expense a pump station at the lower section of the property, which is behind the townhomes on the lower end. That will have to be designed by our engineer, will be subject to the city's approval, uh, city's inspection. And in all probability, because of the existing sewer lines, we'll have to engineer that to such a way that where there are timers and well capacity, it gives it greater than normal capacity so that we're able to store affluent on-site during high-peak hours and, and pump during low-peak hours to utilize the existing sewer. I'd like to conclude by just making these last few comments is that Hickory is a growing city with projected population growth requiring new housing to accommodate the growth as new industry and office spaces announced and developed in your city. Greater commercial, industrial, and office spaces require a larger employment base, promoting population growth in need of housing. Coupled this with the greater Charlotte regional growth and the current national migration of large amounts of the U.S. population, moving from colder, higher tax-based locations to areas with greater job growth in more conducive business climates, better weather, and lower crime, the need for new housing multiplies. Fox News recently named the Charlotte region and the Charlotte area as being the number one move, to move area in the United States. The National Association of Home Builders statistics show that two hundred new average homes built will create or sustain five hundred and eighty jobs, creating its life over twenty-two million in taxes and fees, generate over four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars per month in retail sales, of which thirty-five thousand dollars per month is sales tax to state and local governments. This is over five billion dollars per year in commercial sales, which local businesses benefit from. And from this, more jobs are created to serve these sales. Whether it's a business, a region, or a city, if you aren't growing, you're dying. Growth creates jobs, creates income advancement, a higher standard of living, and a better quality of life when properly managed and built. Carson Ridge, which is the name we're proposing for our neighborhood, is a step in the right direction, which will enhance the area and add value to the surrounding property, and is compatible to the existing neighborhood. We ask for your support and your favorable vote for the rezoning to create this neighborhood. And again, we remind you, by right, we could, we could build eight point seven units per acre. But by going to a planned development, as Mr. Frazier spoke, this is your most restrictive zoning. It ensures that we will submit a plan that we have to follow, it's the maximum density that we could get into it. We can't make changes without coming back to planning or council. We can't deviate from that plan, we can't change erosion control, we can't change stormwater. It allows you to control us, it allows us to know exactly what is expected of us for our end product. So we hope, in your wisdom, that you will approve our project and allow us to build this in Hickory. Thank you.
I have a, a letter to read, uh, that's in favor, so I'll do that at this time. It says, "I am writing to express my support of this petition. As a lifelong resident of this community, a project manager for affordable housing development throughout North Carolina, and a supporter of higher-density development, I feel this development is very well planned and in keeping with prior comprehensive community planning and planning staff's proper evaluation recommendations. Traffic count at the closest intersection is two thousand six hundred and sixty-nine trips, less in twenty twenty-three than in twenty nineteen, when it was twenty thousand six hundred and forty-three trips. Education systems already account for increased population in their planning. They have even awarded a facilities assessment in January. Environmental disruptions is found to be less impacted by higher-density developments. This plan actually provides green space along an existing creek, as opposed to routing it through drainage piping. Community services also plan for increases in population. I believe the area needs more diversity in housing options, and directly by the main road is the perfect placement. The land has been available for sale for a decade. If people want to keep the land open space, they should have bought it and placed it under conservation. Sincerely, Wendy Chester." Uh, to be honest with you, it's not, it's not on the, it's not on the document. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak in favor? There's still time remaining. Anyone? All right, I would ask at this time, there's, since there's no one else desiring to speak in favor, if there's anyone present that would, we've got a five-minute, uh, that we allow for rebuttal. So, uh, I will allow that five minutes total for rebuttal. And, uh, I'm not going to call on you, because I don't recall everybody's names, so just come, the lady first, please, and then the next lady, and we'll allow the five minutes for rebuttal.
One of the points made was that this would bring a lot of new jobs to Mountain View. The current businesses can't staff, the schools can't staff. So while new jobs makes a great argument and sounds great, we don't have the people to fill the jobs that we have. So I don't see how this is going to be a great benefit to us.
Okay. The other lady?
Hello, my name's Laura Blaylock, I live at thirty-three thirty-five NC one twenty-seven south. Um, on the map there, you will see all of the townhomes that are in the proposal border my land, which is an operational cattle farm. Me and my husband raise wagyu cattle. Um, it's been in my family for over a hundred years, and I, I do not oppose this aid development. I, uh, think my community members have spoke very well about, we want to develop responsibly. Um, so that's, that's not why I came up here, actually. Um, I just wanted to note that the plans don't recognize my property as voluntary agriculture district. And part of being part of the voluntary agriculture district is that any proposed developments recognize that the development, these residents that come in, they have to be aware that there is a voluntary agriculture district. Due to animal smells, I raise cattle, we fertilize. There are agricultural things that go on, on our property, neighboring, so I just wanted to, to note that, and also, um, thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. The gentleman?
Mr. Mayor, before, uh, this gentleman comes, but I want to, because we do have our city attorney here. And so I want to ask a question, as she mentioned that it has to be, recognize her agriculture property, is, are we in line with that?
Yeah, I, I think, let's go ahead and finish with, let's finish with this, and then we'll get, we'll get to that.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Andrew Grant, I live on Courtney Drive in Mountain View. I only had one question, we keep talking about two entrances. We keep talking about commercial property on, on each side of the entrance. Is that going to bring additional entrances for the commercial property? He was talking about shops and stores and Starbucks or whatever the coffee thing is. Are all those going to have entrances as well, or are they going to have to go into the development to get to this commercial property? Because if you're saying only two, and then you build parking lots for a Starbucks, you're adding more entrances. So I don't know what, whether that's been addressed, or is that discussed? Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Another gentleman over here?
Thank you, Council, Larry Dickinson at three five three nine south, NC one twenty-seven in Mountain View. Uh, born here, longtime resident. The taxation without representation is always a challenge, be like in history. The tax burden, or the burden on the community is good, but it should be done in planning with, uh, ahead of time with that road. And I just wanted to share a personal communication that's not been shared before with the project coordinator at the N C D O T for the road widening. Making, this is email communication last week from Brown Soul, N C D O T. Making a good bit of progress with planning and design, we are hoping to have a public meeting next month. As things are tracking, we anticipate wrapping up the environment document this summer and heading the right-of-way acquisition in the spring of twenty twenty-five. This is a very important road widening for safety and traffic and all that we've heard before. My question is, is I'm generally against the, the rezoning. If the council is inclined to vote for the rezoning, might it not be better to wait, at least until this, another community meeting with the very important traffic plan that is now being signed and planned? That will be done in parallel with the development building of this, or slightly after this, perhaps? I, I throw out that suggestion, just bringing up the, that latest information. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
There is no date, it is a, a hope to plan to meet next month from the project engineer that's leading up the widening. Well, that's a separate subject, but the highway is project.
There, there's a, there's a, less than a minute and a half left. Okay. Okay. Do you have something that hasn't been said, sir?
As far as, Robert Carswell, three nine seven one, south NC one twenty-seven highway, as far as the widening of road goes, currently it's thirty-six feet wide at that location, there's three lanes. The proposed widening project is going to widen it to over a hundred feet. It's going to be two lanes, a divided highway, two lanes in each direction with sidewalks on either side. The overall width is going to be over a hundred feet. If that happens, and the dates that I were told was property acquisition starting in twenty twenty-five, project beginning March of twenty twenty-seven. I don't know if it still holds, but that's what I was told not too long ago. If that happens, then all the traffic going out of that development will have to go south, reach a turn, probably at, was it, uh, Bethel Church Road? And then come back north. There are going to be turnouts, it's going to be like Highway sixteen south of Newton, where there will be no, there'll be very few intersections, there will be, you'll be limited to turning right going north and left going south. And I just think that's going to complicate the traffic pattern even more.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll allow five minutes for sir rebuttal, uh, if those would like to speak.
Again, Greg Williams from Monroe. Um, I just wanted to answer the gentleman's question about the commercial out parcel, so, so we have that cleared. N C D O T was specific in that we cannot have any direct access from the parking lots of the commercial pars, parcels on the Highway one twenty-seven. They would have to enter and exit from the existing neighborhood streets. So there would not be additional traffic coming willy-nilly from each of the parking lots. But again, from the entrance way in, the right side would be a right-in, right-out only, unless that changes through the T I A and D O T modifies what they want us to do. Second thing, uh, on the street with the widening, uh, the gentleman mentioned thirty-six feet, I'm assuming that's from pavement to pavement. The right-of-way there is, is greater, I know in our planning, we'll have to reserve future right-of-way for the, the road expansion, for that widening. So that would get reserved back for, for N C D O T later on. And with the California lefts that are proposed, is, yes, it'd be a divided highway, they would come back in with signalization that would be south and north of this, so traffic would go past it, make a, make a U-turn, do that signalization to go back down Highway one twenty-seven in whichever direction they needed to go. So it's, it's aggravating, we have a lot of it in our part of the world in Union County. Uh, don't necessarily always love it, but it's efficient and it moves traffic probably quicker than it does trying to turn across traffic, even with signalization. So if there are any other questions that Council has a bus to, we, we're here, as well as my engineer. Thank y'all.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in sir rebuttal? All right, at this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and I'll entertain a motion or discussion from council.
I believe that the planned development is the most restrictive that, um, the city can put on a piece of property. And I do think it is good planning and smart planning to be a P D so that everyone knows what is going there, and they have to follow all the rules that our planning department puts in, and we need the housing. And there is very little growth area, except in the south part of our community.
Well, let me say to, uh, the community of Mountain View, thank you so very much for coming out tonight and certainly sharing, uh, how you feel about your, um, community. Once again, I guess, um, I'm in the month where I'll be a city official for about a whole year now, so I can take a little training wheels off. I'm certainly in between a rock and a hard place, because I do believe that we, as city officials, that we should be able to hear the voices of those that are in the community. Also, um, if you ever get a chance to know me, you'll know, um, where I stand. And you'll understand that I'm not on one side of the fence. Once I make a decision, it's made, and that's, that's my conviction. Um, realizing in what I do in my profession, I've learned that if everybody likes you, then you might not be doing your job the right way. But realizing I'm here to state my conviction as it relates to rezoning in particular. But realizing I'm here to state my conviction as it relates to rezoning, in particular this property. First thing is, the city of Hickory is certainly in a unique place. Just living here for like two, three years, if you just moved in, the city of Hickory has changed tremendously, and there is certainly exponential growth. Question, I guess it's a rhetorical question, not looking to be answered, but it's a good challenge. Growth is a good challenge, but I would rather deal with growth than dealing with decline. And the city of Hickory, as any other city, is certainly in competition of population as it relates to understanding that the natural birth of those in the city can't sustain the tax base and the workforce. There's have to be an increase of population and growth, and that's what's taking place in the city of Hickory. I don't ever want anyone to think that coming to our, out to this city hall meeting where myself already have an idea which way I'm going to vote. I like to listen to both sides. I like to certainly ponder over it, and then certainly let you know where I stand. Also, realizing that times are changing, and consumers that are buying houses and homes, they prefer small lots and less maintenance. It's just not the way it used to be back in the day. That's what people are looking for, especially with the younger generation now. But I do want the residents to know that, thank you so very much for coming. And those who I mentioned that they have reached out to us, anytime you reach out to me, my, my desire is certainly to make sure that you hear my voice as well. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I did speak to, I think, at least three or four of you over the telephone. And I am sympathetic. I think we are challenged right now as a city because we do have people moving in, and one of our greatest challenges that we hear, see, we're hearing things, we're not just thinking growing tax base, we're thinking of accommodating residents. And our employers, too. Someone said, we don't have enough people. Well, people are willing to come, but we don't have housing. Especially affordable housing, or a spectrum of different levels of housing. So it is a challenge for us. One of the things that I feel strongly about is when you have a group of this many people who have issue in their neighborhoods and communities about a new development, I'm hoping that the developer listens, truly listens. And I know you've already made some accommodation and compromise, but I'm hoping you can come to some agreement or more compromise. Because one of the things that I feel we do have to accommodate with growth is to balance and to listen to those who are already there.
I live in Mountain View. I'm at five-one-four-two Harris Farm Road. I've been there for thirty-plus years. Both of my children went to Mountain View Elementary School, Jacob's Fork Middle School, and graduated from Fred T. Ford High School. I volunteer at all three of those schools, plus Ban Oak and Blackburn, and I drive a school bus. I also travel that road extensively each and every day, as this property is less than two miles from my residence. I have had very many conversations with some of you in this room. I have listened to everything that you've said. I agree with some of what you've said. And I also see the other side of it as a resident. I want to, real quickly, my personal opinion is that plan development, as you've heard, is obviously more restrictive and will allow us to have more control over what goes in that, on that piece of property than what we have currently. I am glad to hear, as originally was rumored, that it was going to be four-hundred low-income rental units. It's not that. It is owner-occupied, market-rate, single-family dwellings. If it had been the other way, I would have voted in opposition. I'm glad that each and every one of you came out. I suspect, as it has been said, that some of you will leave here feeling that your voice was not heard. And I, I hope that that's not true, because whether we agree with you or disagree with you, I don't know that it's an agreement or a disagreement, but certainly you shouldn't be able to leave here saying that your voice wasn't heard. And I certainly understand your concerns, as I am a resident of that area as well. I don't want to just keep on and on, but I'm going to make a motion that we approve this rezoning.
Well, first, I wanted to see.
If you can get a second, then we can answer your question.
We can answer?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Now we can have discussion.
So if we can have the attorney, the city attorney address the young lady that came up as it relates to the agriculture.
So Councilmember Freeman, unfortunately, I am not familiar with the voluntary ag district, and I didn't see it designated on any of these documents. So that might be a better question for our planning director, if he has any information on that. If not, the way I see it, it is something the developer is going to have to deal with, regardless whether it's giving notice to adjacent owners as those properties are sold, if that is in fact correct. But Mr. Frazier may have some more.
Mr. Frazier, come to the podium, please.
That, sorry, that specific question is pretty much out of my realm, being the city planning director. But I would suggest the person that would most likely have that answer would be my counterpart, the county planning director, Chris, Mr. Chris Timberlake, or his assistant director, Lori LaCicero. They would definitely know that, because they handle that throughout the entire county. They would be able to answer that young lady's question.
Is my understanding correct that the question is that anyone that would move into those dwellings would have to be advised of the existing agricultural boundaries and what's going on around them before they were sold, that property? Is that, is that where?
That's my understanding in previous life in a previous state. That did hold true.
Okay. So regardless of it was zoned as it is, or zoned as has been proposed, that would still be in effect regardless?
That's correct.
Okay. So it doesn't change, it doesn't really affect the zoning?
No, it, it does not, and I would definitely suggest calling the county planning department. They would definitely have that answer.
Am I correct, Mr. Swanson, that regardless of what the answer to that question is, the zoning, it would be a moot point?
Yeah, I think that's absolutely right. I mean, the only issue is, if that is correct, if that's an incorrect interpretation, if that is a voluntary ag district, and it requires notice to adjoining landowners, then that notice would have to be provided before those lots are sold.
And that applies regardless of the zoning?
That is correct.
Okay. I think that answers that question, then, as best we know right now. Okay. All right. Any other discussion from council?
I, I do want the residents to know we have listened. We had a rezoning put to us recently that we did deny, because it did not, would not benefit the neighbors over, it was close to a wastewater treatment. And so we have to balance what we think will be a good development, and I do think a PD is the right type of development. We need the homes. As Ms. Williams said, we need people moving here. We can't staff all the jobs. Our employers tell us. We need more people, and people want to come here. I've heard from several that moved here, and you're, you're happy here. The area has certainly changed in my lifetime, but we do need people, more people here, and we need a place for them to live. And this is an area that we have space for them to grow.
Any other discussion?
I move for the rezoning, a petition twenty-four zero-two.
Okay, we've, we've already got a motion, and we've got a second. So we've got a motion, we've got a second. I'll ask all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. All right. Next item on our agenda is. Out of order, sir. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our quarterly financial report. At this time, I'll call upon our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood, to introduce it.
Thank you, Mayor Gis. The quarter financial report, this will be the first quarterly report of the fiscal year. So Rodney's going to report on a half-year's worth of financial activity, first two quarters. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Swanson, thanks for having me again. As Mr. Wood mentioned, this is the first quarterly report, so I'm a little late on that. I apologize. But I'm going to update you on the first half of the fiscal year, the first two quarters. As you recall, last month, you approved the annual financial report for last fiscal year. We had been delayed for a number of months. We covered then, so that's why this has been delayed, so I apologize for that. On your screen, you'll see the city's general fund. See the date there of December thirty-first, so for the first six months of activity. The middle column there, annual budget, we've got about an eighty-three-point-five-million-dollar annual budget in the general fund. I should mention, for those that are new, the general fund is the city's main operating fund. That's where most of the activity occurs throughout the city. Obviously, our illustrious planning department that you just heard from is, is included in that general fund. Eighty-three-and-a-half-million-dollar budget, and we have received forty-four-point-seven million dollars in revenue. We've spent forty-five-point-two million dollars. Don't be alarmed by that. That is not atypical. You can see below that, that's about, that's a five-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. Keep in mind, this is one date. December thirty-first was on a Sunday. January second was on a Tuesday, and property taxes were due by January sixth. So it's all in, one reason why there's a deficit is the property tax revenue is still being paid well into January. But when we cut that off at December thirty-first, sometimes we do have some expenditures higher than our revenues at this particular time. I'd also say on the expenditure side, we had, we've paid over three-fourths of our debt for the fiscal year and the first half of the year, so that makes a difference. As well as, we have purchased quite a bit of our capital improvement, or at least made the order. We may not have received it, but we've placed the orders, which encumbered the funds.
Do we know at this time how much of the tax has been paid?
We do. In fact, I've got updates through January. We are on pace of where we've gotten before. I can update you actually through January tomorrow, if you'd like to see. Our property tax revenues have, have come in quite nicely.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Our largest revenue, as we mentioned, is the property tax revenue. In fact, here it is through December, Ms. Patton. Twenty-eight-point-eight million dollars had been collected through December thirty-first. Again, a timing issue. You see, the good thing about this chart is that we're increasing. We had one small dip in twenty-three, not as a result of any economic activity. Again, it's based on people's decision to pay and when. So we're about twenty-eight-point-nine million dollars in revenue of our property tax. We've, budget of revenues for property is thirty-seven-point-one million dollars. So off the math in my head, you know, we're about eighty percent, roughly eighty percent of what we've collected through December. We're over ninety percent through January. Sales tax revenues, this is the really economic climate. Hickory has the hub of the metro region. You know, we receive a lot of sales tax activity from commercial activity that was discussed earlier tonight, as well as retail purchases, restaurants, just general commerce. Sales tax is a large portion of our revenues. You'll note that it is also increasing. I will say, one thing you'll notice, if you look at between twenty-one and twenty-three, you'll notice almost a million-dollar change between those two years, which was healthy revenue increases. You'll see where we are in this year, that we're only a hundred, less than a hundred thousand dollars higher than last year. So that is growing, but the pace of growing has certainly diminished. This is through November. We do not have December tax revenues yet. I have heard across the state that those revenues are higher than November, so hopefully this will, this will increase. But what happened in twenty-two and twenty-three is the retail, the internet sales. Amazon, any kind of, folks that don't have a presence here. We, North Carolina actually changed the law so that those internet sales now are getting taxed, and we are receiving those. So we've pretty much received all of that over the last two-year period. So those sales are kind of baked into the cake, so to speak, so now we're looking for additional sales tax revenue going forward. Switching to our water and sewer fund, this is a fully self-supporting fund from user fees for our water and sewer system that, their annual budget is about forty-four-point-seven million dollars. We have received revenues of almost twenty-million dollars through December. Our expenditures are twenty-one-point-eight million dollars. You'll note, last year at this time, we were almost three-million dollars expenditures over revenues. Again, there's a reason for that. Number one, the, the typical revenue streams are going to be in your spring and summer months that are upcoming this fiscal year. As well as, on the expenditure side, we have made the bulk of our capital purchases for the first half of the year and made our debt payments. So obviously, if those debt payments are at a higher percentage than fifty percent, you're going to have more expenditures than revenues. Building permit activity, not sure I want to talk too much about this slide based on our prior conversation. But you'll see on the residential side, it's, it's hard to avoid. Our residential activity has considerably picked up from before. And keep in mind that Mr. Wood and I actually grew up in Hickory, and we remember the days in the, in the nineties and early two thousands, when we would grow by ten homes a year. So to have two-hundred-and-sixty-two residential permits, again, through November, and I wanted to make just one comment about that. We only have five months of activity. The county is going through a software change, and we were not able to receive updated building permit activities. As you know, those building permits are approved by Catawba County Building Inspections. So we'll have that report hopefully soon for December. So this is just five months' worth, but you can see, we have two-hundred-and-sixty-two residential permits already in the system through November. We have a hundred-and-twelve, our commercial permits have, have declined. So we have total permits of three-hundred-and-eighty-four through November, a three percent increase over last year. So three percent is not gangbusters, but it's growing, which is certainly good. On the value, you can see the residential value has significantly, whoops. Residential value has increased significantly. As I mentioned, more homes on the market and being built are now at thirty-million dollars through November. The commercial is only eighty-three-million dollars, but I would caution you that last year's was unusually large at this time. We had two big projects, if you'll recall, MDI. Their permit was in July or August of last year, so that was the part of their one-twenty-three. And the solid, BioSolids facility that Sean is managing, that permit was also in that first five months of last year. Eighty-three-million dollars in commercial growth through five months is very, very good, so don't let that fool you. Overall, a hundred-and-fourteen- Overall, $114 million in value through November. I expect we'll hit well over $200 million again. Last, the last two fiscal years, we had $250 million in new value the last two years. Compared to a typical, really good year of $100 million, $100 million in permit value, we're still doing really well. On the activity, you know, I'm going to have to start shrinking this slide a little bit, but you can see, there's quite a number of residential projects. I'll point out, and I looked in my notes, Wallace Dairy, that second one there, 38 single-family dwelling units. That is the only one currently under construction of a significant, you know, more than five or 10 units in the Mountain View area. And I think last time we looked, there was only six houses that had been built in that particular subdivision. The other development activities you see in residential really are spread throughout the city limits of Hickory. In all four quadrants, there's not one that really has more than the other, which is a good thing. It tells us, you know, that we're growing in multiple places. So, on the residential side, that certainly reflects the growth that we are seeing. On the right-hand side, I guess towards the bottom, you'll note Town Place Suites is one that I'll mention, as well as the bottom-left Home Two Suites. They have now begun the grading of two new hotels in the city limits of Hickory. So, we're excited, both about 100 rooms, so we're excited about that. MDI expansion continues to go on. I told you, they started that last year, so that expansion's going. I know you're all familiar with the Hickory Metro Convention Center, 45,000 square feet of new space. I think I saw Mandy. She's still here. Shout out to Mandy behind me. That project's going really well. And then the Hickory Aviation Museum and CBCC Workforce Innovation Center that you are all a part of, and you've been in the groundbreaking, that's going to be a transformative project for our community, so we're very excited about that. Future, only had four, the RH Behringer Project, which is going to start over near the Chamber Office Building, South Gate Parkway, I believe it is, South Gate Park. And then who can forget the Microsoft Project? Certainly, we are working on providing utilities down to that area, but we're still, you know, a number of months and possibly a year or two away before that construction begins. Our economic climate, so the Federal Reserve on a national perspective, they've maintained the Fed Fund's rate. You may see them meet once a month, once or twice, once, or once a month or once every other month. They've maintained that target rate of five and a quarter, five and a half percent since July of last year. We are hearing, because, well, we had expected to see some declines in those rates. The US economy is just, you can't understand it, you know, the greatest jobs report you've seen, highest in 12 months since January of last year. It shouldn't be growing like that, but it still is. The CPI, we all know what inflation has done to our pocketbooks, and here, of course, when we're buying city goods and services. You'll note on there that 7.2% in '21. The CPI was 6.4% in '22, and it's declined to 3.3% last year. The Fed's target is 2%. I'm not sure they'll get to 2%, but I think, once they get in the twos, I think they'll start pulling back the interest rate. The projection now is probably either if they're March meeting, which I don't think's going to happen, or if they're May meeting, we should start seeing those interest rates decline.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
Do you ever adjust these numbers according, I mean, with inflation? Is there any way to?
Sure. When we go into next year's budget, for example, we're just having discussions with the department now, or departments across the city, we, for example, one of the increases, energy increases. We've heard that Duke Energy is proposing a 6% to 8% increase. So, we've talked to departments. We're a heavy power user.
You've got a heavy budget, I mean.
We do.
Yeah.
You know, at the, I think last year I showed you about chemicals, a 200% increase at the water plant. So, those things significantly affect us.
I'm thinking about maybe when you're comparing the years.
Through the year? Well, we do maintain a little buffer, like we do at...
No, he's saying like, like in 1980, adjusted for inflation versus today.
I forgot, you're the math teacher.
You're doing the math.
I have not done that, but I can tell you, it's probably, it's very, very significant what we've seen the last three years. And really, as you know, you add those numbers together, so just because we're down to 3.3% last year, that doesn't mean we're declining. That just means we've had a 16% increase over the last two years. That's very significant. And that's probably, I was a little kid there, a little lad, but that's probably the late 70s and early 80s, last time we've seen an inflation increase like that on a percentage basis.
Over 40 years?
Core CPI, you see about 3.9% in December, so that was the lowest since May of '21. What we're still facing, and I think we're seeing that in Hickory to some extent, is shelter or rent inflation is still high. It's still 6.2%. That's still very significant for folks trying to find a place to live that are having to pay rent. However, one good news is US wages did increase 6.8% over the last year. So, wages have not kept up with inflation, but it certainly helps absorb some of the blow.
What's the inflation rate for food?
Food was about 4%, if I remember correctly. The score is 3.9, so 3.3% overall. So, food was probably in that 4% range. Yeah.
I just heard a higher number today.
It has come down considerably as well. Yeah. On the local side, what this means for us is we still have a tight labor market, as some of you have pointed out in the last discussion. It does make recruitment and retention in the city very difficult, and that has still been a problem for us. We are trying to get into the high schools, I think, last time I met with you, to get to folks early, let them know that a career in city government is certainly worthwhile. So, we continue to do that. We've got a fire academy, and we've got folks trying to find police officers. We've got a number of efforts ongoing that try to get folks to work at the city of Hickory. And then the last item, I touched on that earlier, the cost and the availability of vehicles and equipment. Those costs have not come down, and the supply is not there. I think Chief Hutchinson told me, if you ordered a fire truck today, it's going to take two years to get here. So, that is very, very significant. So, we're certainly looking at those items now to see, because we're going to need a fire truck within two years, so we need to go ahead and get one ordered.
What about fuel cost?
Fuel's actually been, been pretty good. I think we're now back at $3 a gallon roughly, but it got down about $2.85, $2.90. That has subsided, I think, with the government's military exercises. That's going to have a short-term spike until that's over, then I think it will stabilize again. Obviously, cyclical, by the time you get to May, June, July, rate, gas prices will go up. But I don't expect, unless we have a significant war event on top of what we've already got, I don't see us going back to $4 a gallon. Of course, I lost a Chick-fil-A sandwich to the city manager because I didn't think we'd ever hit $4. So, I've lost that one bet. I may not, I may not bet anymore on that.
Wise, you're a wise man.
Finally, this slide is our investment report. So, as the Lord giveth, He taketh away. On the interest rate side, it certainly hurts mortgage rates, and it certainly affects inflation to a certain degree. But on the investment side, it does have its benefits. We are now over almost 3.2% that we are earning on all of the city's investments. We have earned $1.9 million in interest income for the first six months of the year. I haven't said that in a long time. And then there's a description of all of our investments that the finance department keeps up with, spread out. Diversification is key. These are all legal investments, and we're restricted by the local government's State Treasurer's Office in what the city can invest, but just know that we don't have those funds just sitting under a mattress or in a money market. We have money market funds, but we also invest those longer term to achieve a desirable yield.
Now, these types down here, are these all that we can have to choose from, or is this just what we do?
That's what we currently have. What you saw last year, we had some commercial paper and CDs. They just, they aren't that attractive right now compared to what we can get from those government agencies. Federal Home Loan Bank, for example, which FAL, FHLB, you'll see, we've got almost 20% of our portfolio in that. They're offering the best yields at this point, so we've got 20% of our portfolio in there. We do have quite a bit still in cash, you see. We have $20 million of the North Carolina Capital Management Trust, another $20 million in money market. Keep in mind that that's primarily the December tax, property tax collections that we've received. So, when you're receiving $10 million in property tax revenue, you can't just spend that right away. It'll take a while to filter out of the system, so those numbers will decline by your next quarter's report. That's all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Miller?
What was the, where you have 20% of your money, or our money? I guess it's, we're all together.
It's partly his money, too.
It's not just your money, but our money.
Yes, sir.
What, what is that vehicle that we have 20% of our money in?
Federal Home Loan Bank. It's a US government agency.
Okay, and what's the percentage we get on that?
We, uh...
I can't read from here.
Well, I don't have it.
Is that up there?
We can get it. We can, if you don't have it, we can get it.
Oh, just give me a rough number.
I'll tell you right now. No, I won't. It's on two pages. For example, we have a federal home loan bank that matures in August 26th of 2024, and it is earning 2.15%.
Okay.
So, it's a blended rate. We have probably 60 different securities.
Okay.
And so, it's diversified, and again, into those types and into those maturities, so that they can come due, so that we can pay operating costs once they come due. Until we ladder those out, so that when they become due, we can pay our bills.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we can invest in anything that has a chance of losing value?
I wouldn't go that far. I don't think that's a guarantee. But the general statute does restrict to what we can invest.
And it goes, just a history lesson, it goes back to the 30s. There were a lot of local governments that went bankrupt, and one of the reasons was those are their investments, so the Local Government Commission was created after that to prevent that, and they really restrict what we're allowed to invest in.
And if you want to wow your friends, the state of North Carolina can invest in stocks, but cities and counties cannot.
Okay.
Anything else?
Any battery companies?
No, no bad. So, that protects us from risky stocks.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is appointment to boards and commissions. I think we have a couple this evening. I can start it off. I would like to nominate Sherri Griffith as a representative on the Public Housing Authority Board. We had a resignation. A gentleman, Kenneth Jeters, took a job unexpectedly out of state, so he resigned effective January 25th of this year, and that created a position, and I would like to nominate Sherri for that vacant position.
I'll second that.
We got others, I think.
I mean, I've got, I want to nominate Pamela, well, I lost it.
Kiefer?
Kiefer.
Kiefer.
Pamela Kiefer is Board Three Representative on the Library Advisory Board.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. We have two nominations. Are there others? All right?
I'll second, by the way.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? That carries unanimously. All right, let's see. I want to make a note for the record. The letter that I read earlier in favor of the rezoning petition during the public hearing, I have since learned that Ms. Wendy Chester lives at 4919 Kennedy Street. 4919 Kennedy Street, that's where she resides. There was some questions about where she lived at the time. I didn't have that information, and I now have that information, so I'd like to reflect that for the record. All right. Any matters not on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. General comments?
I have one. This is, I was pointed out today that, or this evening, that it is Mr. Griffith's last council meeting. He is moving to Greensboro, so...
Yes. I, I, I share that as well. He was, I think I'm correct in, in... Oh, you want to put, okay, we'll get a picture. Hang on. I thought you retired. Okay. Okay. All right. Your 30 seconds is up, Robert. All right. Yeah, Kevin's been with the Record, I believe, seven years now, is that right? Almost eight.
Wow.
He took a job with the Greensboro News and Record, and as Ms. Patton has already alluded to, we certainly want to recognize him and thank him. He has spent a lot of time, I think, with most of our staff and with all of our council, and he, I can tell you this, believe it or not, me and Kevin have had a lot of conversations. He's always been very professional and very cordial, and I just want to tell him that I appreciate that, that he's done that, and I wish him, as the rest of the council and the staff does, the very best in his endeavors as he moves, I guess you're going to move to Greensboro, is that correct? Okay. I was, he told me before the meeting, he's got two official days left, and this will probably be his last council meeting, unless we call a special meeting, and I don't anticipate that. So, we want to give our farewell to Kevin and thank him for his service.
You've got to replace that.
It's not Robert, is it?
No, no, he's not working. He's the Fed.
Yeah, okay. It's not, okay. Okay, so we do want to thank, we do want to thank you sincerely, Kevin, for all that you've done to help support our community and to, and to get the word out to those who, in the media, so thank you. And we'll get a picture in a minute, Robert. On a sadder note, I suspect that some of you have heard, I don't know if all of you have heard, Mr. Leroy Lell passed earlier this morning. Of course, we want to give our condolences to his wife and family, of course. Brad Lell served on our council for many, many years. You know, it's just, it's just a very sad time. Leroy was invested almost his entire life into making Catawba County and our region a better place to work and to live and raise a family. So, his contributions were many, you know, the furniture, the motels, of course, the convention center. He was very instrumental in the ASU locating here in Hickory. He's just, in my opinion, a great example for us all to follow, and he will be greatly missed. So, our condolences once again to his family and those that knew him very well. I think that our city manager has some accolades to share.
So, Thursday, at the annual North Carolina City-and-County Managers Association Meeting, Rodney Miller was announced the North Carolina City-and-County Managers Association Assistant Manager of the Year. God, he did the write-up. He didn't know. They knew we were keeping it a secret from him.
We knew.
They did a good job keeping it secret. When she submitted it, or said she's going to, I said, I don't know why you're wasting your time. He's not going in, but sure enough...
You like that vote of confidence from your boss, don't you?
I was joking. But fortunately, PowerPoint formatting was not part of the assessment for the awards, so, yes. But congratulations, Rodney. There was nine other, and this is city and county assistant managers that he was competing with, and there's a board with the group that scores them out, and he scored the highest amongst all of them.
Well, Rodney, I just want you to know, there was never any doubt in my mind. I knew you were going to get it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. Any other business we need to attend to?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Thank you for being here.